Call to order this special meeting of the Beverly City Council Monday, April 26, 2021. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames? Copeland?
Here.
Staubman? Flaherty?
Yeah.
Flowers? Hausmann?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
And Guancey?
I am here. Councilor Hausmann, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Hausmann. Great job as usual. Now I will read the script. Script for remotely conducted joint meeting of the Beverly City Council. Confirming member access. This is Paul Guancey, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly. Tonight's meeting is also being video-recorded by BevCam. I am confirming that all members and staff are present and can hear me. Councilors, we're good? Love the thumbs up. Councilor Copeland and Councilor Hausmann, thank you. Good evening. This joint open meeting of the Beverly City Council and the Community Preservation Committee, the Trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust, the Beverly Golf and Tennis Commission, the Historic District Commission, the Open Space and Recreation Commission, and the Parks and Recreation Commission is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth in response to the outbreak of COVID-19. This allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. If anyone would like to speak, please type "me" in the chat so that I can go in order that your names appear. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Each board or committee will call their own roll call. There's no formal votes tonight. It's just calling our boards and commissions to order and then adjourning individually at the end of the meeting. So I will ask Heather Richter to call to order the Community Preservation Committee?
Yes. Hi, everybody. So I'd like to call to order the meeting on April 26, 21, for the Community Preservation Committee, and I will call a roll for the members. So Derek Beck?
Here.
Roxanne?
Here.
Amber Stone?
Here.
Kristi Edwards?
Here.
John Hall?
Here.
Nancy Marino?
Here.
McCrory?
Here.
Wendy Pearl?
Here.
And myself, Heather Richter, here.
Thank you, Ms. Richter. Can I remind everybody to please, if you're not speaking, make sure that your microphone is muted? That way, there's no feedback and we can hear everybody. Now I will ask Ms. Darlene Nguyen to call to order the Beverly Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Beverly, the special joint meeting of the Beverly Affordable Housing Trust on April 26, 2020, and call the roll. Brian Ailes?
Here.
Susan Gabriel?
Here.
Mayor Cahill?
Here.
Richard Dinkin?
Here.
And myself, Darlene Nguyen. So we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Now I will ask Mr. William Loud to call to order the Beverly Golf and Tennis Commission.
You can hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Loud.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Beverly Golf and Tennis Commission, special order, April 26, 2021. Arthur Athanas?
Here.
Andrew Cooper? I think Andrew's on the road from south. Kevin Escalillo?
Here.
Chad Crandall?
Here.
Martin Lala?
Here.
Chad Crandall? Did I saw you on here?
Here.
Okay, thank you. And myself, Bill Loud.
Thank you, Mr. Loud. Now I saw Mr. Finch is here, so I'll ask William Finch to call to order the Historic District Commission. Bill, are you out there?
He's still on mute.
Bill, please unmute.
Yeah.
Great.
I will hereby call to order the special meeting of the Beverly Historic District Commission on April 26, 2021. I will now call the roll. Caroline Mason?
Here.
Suzie Lamont?
Here.
Wendy Pearl?
Here.
And William Finch, myself, here.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Let's move on to the Open Space and Recreation Commission, and Ms. Darlene Nguyen will call the roll to try to establish a quorum. Ms. Nguyen?
Yes, I believe that both the Chair and the Vice Chair are not present.
Right.
So, let's see. David Alden-St Pierre?
Yes, I am.
Oh, you are here. David, do you want to do it or do you want me to continue?
If you could, please. I'm at work, so I'm just hiding away in a little cubby hole right now.
Okay. Yeah, so anyway, I forgot to say that I'm calling to order on behalf of the Chair, the Open Space and Recreation Committee for April 26, 2021. So David Alden-St Pierre, the Chair confirmed. David Brewster? Charlie Mann?
Here.
Todd Callahan? Allison Dudley? Elizabeth Dunn?
Here.
Marilyn McCrory?
Here.
Wayne Miller?
I'm here.
Gregory Sharp?
Here.
Okay. That is a quorum of the Open Space Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. And last but certainly not least, I'm looking for Mark Casey to call to order the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is Mark Casey. Can you hear me?
We got you, sir.
Okay, kid. I'm here to call to order Parks and Recreation Commission on this April 26, 21 meeting. Nancy Marino?
Here.
G. N. Jeffgood?
Here.
Phil Loud?
Yeah.
Henry Pizzo?
Here.
Justin Rapp? Okay, how about Mike? So we have, there's five of us. We have a...
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. It's great to see so many familiar faces and hear so many familiar voices that we haven't been able to seem, that we don't get together now because of COVID-19. One of these days, hopefully before the end of this calendar year, for sure. So let's start off our meeting, now that we're all in compliance with the open meeting law, with Ms. Heather Richter, who is the Chair. And I think Heather has been on the Community Preservation Committee since the beginning, to read a statement. Ms. Richter?
Hi. Yes, thank you. So just because I'm sure some people aren't familiar with the CPC, I just wanted to speak a little bit about what it is and what we do. So one of the responsibilities of the Community Preservation Committee is to study the needs, possibilities, and opportunities of the community. We achieve this by outreach. We have an annual public hearing, and we make ourselves aware and we study the city plans, including the master plan and all the other plans for the various boards and commissions. These are all considered during our deliberations on the applications for funding. We're very excited by this opportunity for open and transparent discussion among such a comprehensive group of stakeholders in our great city, and thank you all for coming. CPA was adopted in Beverly in 2012. The CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, administers funds accrued locally from a real estate tax surcharge and is matched by state funds derived from the Registry of Real Estate Transactions. So the state match was recently announced at 32.3% for fiscal year 2022, which is a great deal compared with 11.57% last year. Our round eight funding recommendations are with the City Council for their consideration at the moment, and they'll be reviewed at the May 3 meeting. City Council may vote to approve, approve at a lower dollar amount or to deny funding for any or all of the recommendations. There are statutory restrictions as to how CPA funds may be spent. The CPC website, on the city website, has all the relevant documents for review, including the Community Preservation Act, the allowable spending chart, the Beverly Ordinance, and our CPC plan. The allowable spending categories are open space, recreational land, community housing, and historic resources, and for the purposes of creation, acquisition, preservation, support, and rehabilitation or restoration. There are nine members of the committee. Several of us have been on the committee since 2011, when we wrote the ordinance. The committee includes a representative from each of Open Space, Conservation, Historic District, and Recreation Commissions, as well as Planning Board and Housing Authority. There are three at-large members, of which I am one. All eligible applications for funding, whether they come from city departments, nonprofit organizations, or private individuals, are considered against the criteria in the CPC ordinance. While CPA funds are extremely important, these taxpayer funds are finite, and for the large share of projects funded are only part of the funding mix. Each year, the CPC strives to keep some funds available for emergency out-of-cycle applications. We've only approved a bond payment once before for the Camp Paradise property as committing against future years' funding is a serious decision in part because there's no absolute guarantee that the CPA will be in effect years from now. Also, reducing available funds for future years' budgets will consequently reduce future CPA support for community projects. Thank you.
I'm unmuted. There I go. Thank you, Ms. Richter. Very appreciative of that information, especially people that have decided to tune in at home. So let's turn over the microphone to the gentleman whose idea this all was. It was Mayor Cahill's idea to get us all together. So Mayor Cahill, you hear somebody. There you are.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Chair of the CPC, and all the other boards and committees that have come together tonight. As President Guancey said, I did ask for this meeting, but I didn't ask for it. We did. The number of city department heads and other key staff that work in all these different capacities that touch and are touched by the CPA as a resource. You know, as we all together spend so much time each year thinking about the many, many needs that we have that fit categorically within the CPA eligibility guidelines, it's easy to see that with a resource, and I've got to say how thankful I am that the Community Preservation Act exists. And there are a number of people in this community who deserve the credit for getting that passed now nine years ago at a city election. And some of them are in the meeting tonight and others are not. But all the work that went into that, it's made a great difference for our community. So it's a tremendous resource. Now, as we look at it, it brings in a little more than $1 million a year between the 1% surcharge and whatever the state's able to match with that given year. And the reality, as we all know, is that there are tens of millions of dollars of really worthy need within the eligible categories. Some of them are city-owned properties and assets. Some of them are opportunities for the city to take ownership of. Others are privately owned throughout the community. So there's a lot that makes it up. With that said, if I could ask Denise Deschamps to share the document that we looked at earlier. This is a document that we put together last week to share out ahead of time so that everybody could just have a little bit of the, you know, perhaps get the wheels turning for the conversation tonight. I won't go through the top part except to say that I appreciate the perspective that Chairwoman Richter brought to the concept of bonding and using some of the annual money to service a debt line. It is something that needs to only be done with great forethought. And at the same time, given that some of the projects that we have and some of the categories to invest in that we have can easily be seen as being quite large, we think that there may well be both an opportunity and a need to look again at bonding as part of our strategy. Certainly, we know with the city budget, those of us who work with the city budget on a regular basis know that, you know, in our annual operating budget, there's a line for debt service. There's a certain percentage of our annual revenues that we, you know, over time and consistently dedicate to that idea of bonding larger projects and paying back through debt service. So I do hope that that is part of the conversation. And tonight's conversation really is, to my mind, just a beginning of a conversation. Let me say that differently. I know that the CPC talks about this quite regularly, these issues. And at the same time, the CPC, by statute, is meant to receive what's brought forward to them, eventually make recommendations. City Council, as the legislative body, the city has the formal appropriating authority and responsibility. And with that said, I think all of us who as stakeholders of various types within this conversation, hopefully this is just an opportunity for us all to see the scope and to begin to brainstorm a bit as to how to meet the many, many needs that we can bring forward. So with that said, just a quick look through these boxes. Under affordable housing, we anticipate that Phase 2 of the Anchor Point Family Housing Development, that Harbor Light will come forward looking for additional affordable housing funds as a request. Our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which was created by the city on recommendation of the work the consultant did who worked with the city on our housing plan. So we created that, and with no dedicated income stream for that, we're not sure whether from time to time we're going to need some replenishment, and that's something we may be asking the CPC for at various times. There's much more in the way of certainly need in the affordable housing front, and we don't know necessarily when or how or where the next project's going to come forward, but we can anticipate that we will see more. Under Historic Preservation, this is a long list. We know that the Carriage House at Lynch Park will be, you know, $5 million or more project. The Golf and Tennis Clubhouse, easily more than $5 million. Both important, you know, city-held assets. The JIR Hall, which you know well, and you funded some significant work there, has remaining, which is about $2 million. City Hall is a building built in the late 1700s, certainly worthy of support through CPA funds, you know, if and as we're able to see our way to that. The CPC notes we've written before you recently on city cemeteries. We have numerous city cemeteries that are historic or have parks to them that are historic that need attention on a number of fronts. Historic Beverly, our local historic society, they have three houses, the Cabot House, Hale Farm, and Balchamps, again, you know them well, that have needs. We also have historic resource surveys that can be done and national registration nominations and such work that is appropriate for a number of different historic resources around the community. Going over Open Space and Recreation, we know we've been working on parcel 27X on Green Hill for some time. We brought that forward in the pre-application process for this cycle, recognizing that it wouldn't likely be that quick to come together. We still hope that it can and will. Then, you know, then we look at parcels of land that are contiguous to already protected properties around town that we can anticipate and think of. Places like Sally Milligan, the Phillips Preserve, and Moraine Farm, Beverly Commons, et cetera. Future opportunities for pocket parks in the downtown, where a small-sized parcel can make a big difference in a neighborhood. The active recreation needs that we have, which are many and varied, and I didn't want to make mistakes or leave things out by trying to delve into there, but I'll trust for the Recreation Commission to speak for those. And I do note that when I mention Green Hill and others, it's quite likely that, for the most part, land acquisition opportunities can tend to be out-of-cycle asked. And, you know, it'd be great and nice if one can be fit into the calendar, and certainly we would look for those opportunities, but it's the kind of opportunity that maybe isn't as likely to fit the annual calendar of the CPC. And that's probably enough said there, except to say that this is not by any means meant to be exhaustive. This was some brainstorming we did in-house to try to just get some things, you know, kind of churning. But please, if there's something that's not there that any of you think should be there, this is not meant to be any kind of, you know, exhaustive look at the need. I do want to say that in addition to the several boards and committees who were convened, we've tried to invite everyone else we can think of who are stakeholders in the community who have, at various times, a need and a desire to look to the CPA as a resource for their needs. And they include, and I'm really happy to have you here, Executive Director Kate Bowditch and one of her key staff people, Chris LaPointe from Essex County Greenville, Executive Director Sue Goganian from Historic Beverly, Executive Director Andrew DeFranza from Harbor Light Community Partners, and again, one of the key people over at the Trustees of Reservations, Dave Santamena. If I've missed anybody in my quick look through who's in the meeting, I hope you'll speak up when your opportunity comes. But this is really an opportunity for you folks to hear from each other and share some perspective and share some brainstorming ideas. I think at the end of the conversation tonight, it'll be just, you know, what can we take from it and move forward? No agenda to try to have a plan or a decision point or any kind of strategy at the end of, you know, 90 minutes or two hours together. It's really more of a beginning of a broader conversation that many people have been engaging in in smaller groups to date. The only thing I want to do, Mr. President, before turning it back to you, is to ask our City Finance Director, Brian Ailes, to give us a quick update on the various accounts within the CPA fund. I know that the CPC had requested him in the last couple of days to try to update them on the fund balances. Mr. Ailes?
Sure. I'm happy to let everyone know kind of where the accounts sit. To date, since its inception, the total revenues that have been brought in through the surcharge and through the state match is in excess of $7.2 million. And of that, more than $6 million has been distributed to various projects, many stakeholders who are at the meeting this evening. And what remains in the account is just about $1.1 million, just under that. And it's in really two different categories. The largest is the Open Space Reserve, which houses $720,000 in assets. And then the Unreserved Fund Balance, which can be used for any of the categories noted as eligible. That has about $343,000 in it. And then the Community Housing Reserve and the Historic Reserve have just, you know, a minimal amount left in them after the last appropriation was approved this round eight. So that gives you $1,064,000 available in the Community Preservation Account. That will carry us through June 30, at which time, starting July 1, we're able to establish FY '22 budget, which would, at that point, create what we would expect to be about $1.1 million, probably in excess of that, in addition to what's left.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Ailes. Denise, you can stop sharing that. If anybody needs to see that document again later in the meeting, they can reshare. Mr. President, that's enough for me. I'm really just interested and excited to hear the conversation from all the parties here joining us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill, and thank you, Mr. Ailes. Always good to see you here. When I see your face, I feel confident that our city's finances, no matter where they are, are in good hands. Thank you. So why don't we go to our individual committees and commissions to see if they have any questions for the mayor or comments to make? And I will ask the Chair to recognize their members. I think that would be easier. And if you could type that you want to speak in the chat, that would be great, too. So Heather Richter, the Community Preservation Committee, do you have anything else to add? Or do you have members that would like to speak? Unmute. And if you're not speaking, please mute.
I don't have anything to add personally, but I would like to call on other committee members. And unfortunately, I can't see the chat.
Okay. I can take care of that if somebody types in, because I can see it.
I'm sure some of the other Community Preservation Committee members have things they want to say.
Anybody, don't be shy. Like Mayor Cahill said, we have three or three and a half hours, I mean, an hour and a half or two hours. Mr. Beckwith, good to see you again. Please.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Richter's laughing because I never hesitate to have a chance to say a few words at our meetings. I think that, for me, as a member of the CPC through the Planning Board, tonight is really about listening to what other people's ideas are, in part because, as a member of the CPC, you know, I swim in all of these projects and things like that and are aware of the funding. I think one of the things that's, you know, intriguing, the idea of bonding, to be able to pay for some of these big-ticket items and things like that, sounds, you know, really interesting. We've only done it one time before. That was for Camp Paradise. That was, we granted $450,000 for that acquisition. At the same time, the bonding overall, which we're only about halfway through with, is, the debt service for that is $90,000 plus, which is a 20% premium on that. So on the original grant that we made. So bonding does come with a price, and it also limits the committee in terms of what it can be spending money on. So that historically, we really looked very carefully at how much we want to cut future projects. That said, there were so many very expensive items that are on the horizon. You know, it's going to be an interesting conversation. One of the things that was interesting, and luckily, Chairperson Richter and I had the opportunity to talk briefly with the mayor last week. He reached out to us and just to talk a little bit about this meeting. And, you know, part of all of the funding that we have at the CPC, virtually, as Chairperson Richter mentioned, every funding that comes before us, part of our decision-making and evaluation is, who's contributing, and how many other contributors are part of the puzzle in putting together the funding for a project. And virtually every project that we do fund has multiple contributors to it, both as a show of community support, but also because we can't be the do-all and be-all and end-all of funding for projects, because we do have a limited amount of money. So it's going to be a fine balance, I guess, looking forward. And we know that the big projects... And we know that the big projects are coming. Last year, or actually with fiscal '20 and fiscal '21 money, we were able to combine to give $700,000 towards the Briscoe project. But that's 34% of the entire CPC budget for both of those years. So, you know, we have to be careful not to deplete all the money that is available for all sorts of other community efforts along the way. That's just my, my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckwith. You made me smile when you said Ms. Richter smiled because you never jump at the chance to get the microphone. We have a couple of those on the City Council, too. And it's pretty good because you're, and he's a dear friend of mine. You're sitting, in my screen, you're sitting right next to him. Did I give away who it was? I'm sorry. Ms. Richter, I'm going to ask if any other members of the CPC Committee want to make a comment or ask a question. Hey, Wendy Pearl. How are you, Wendy?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm Wendy Pearl. I sit on the Community Preservation Committee as a representative of the Historic District Commission. And the other members of the commission are here, so I may speak again later, if I can reserve that right. I thought the list was a great start for projects that all seem to be eligible for community preservation funding. There are some things that weren't on there that we have seen come back continually from the city, so I don't know where those fit in the priority list. The work of the City Clerk's Office has come in almost every year since the inception of the Act. So where does that fit in the city priorities? They've received a lot of money, and it's a category of work that I think we could all admit, we don't know a lot about how that work is prioritized. We've encouraged the city to do a lot of planning around the preservation of archival and vital records. And I think there's some more work to be done there, because it seems like there's a real need for continued funding in that area. But unlike the other categories, there didn't seem to be a really good framework for making those decisions and allotting resources for priority work. So I would encourage you to look in that area. The recreation needs do seem to come in very regularly. So I know you noted the active recreation needs are many and varied. It would be nice to see a plan around that as well, because it is hard to evaluate one tennis court versus another totlot versus another ball field lighting. You know, they seem to be kind of all over the place. And having a little more direction on what the city views as the priorities, kind of, you know, groupings of A-list, B-list, C-list, or types of facilities, you know, if, if totlots are needed, could we do a citywide totlot project? You know, it's, it's just hard for us to understand the thinking behind the proposal sometimes. And then there was a project many years ago that doesn't seem to be on your list, and that was the Dane Street Bath House, which seems to be a real critical piece of infrastructure. We have not seen an application for rehabilitating or improving that asset in any way. And I think there was a lot of interest there. And just rethinking about that project makes me wonder how the climate analysis that's been going on in the city might lend itself to some really interesting projects that combine preservation of open space, restoration of wetland environments, and, you know, improvement to some of the recreational facilities we have on our shoreline. So I guess I'm pushing for a little more creativity in combining some of the categories and thinking about the current context, because it's been a long time since the Act was passed. And the climate vulnerability of the city and the assets that are in harm's way are pretty clear now. So it would be nice to see CPC use to leverage other climate funding and kind of kill a bunch of birds with one stone, although we don't want to kill actual birds. But it, it just seems like there's some more information on the table. So I thought the list was a great start. I didn't see anything that was like jumping out at me as not eligible. And I think having those reserves in hand for things like the housing and open space projects is really important, because we know that those are going to come up and there'll be opportunities we don't want to miss. So the last thing I want to say is, for some of the historic preservation projects, if we're going to prioritize golf and tennis, or GAR, or Lynch Park Carriage House, it may mean that another property needs to kind of wait. And I don't think the city should defer maintenance during that wait period. I think there is still work that the city needs to do to preserve some of those properties, so we're not moving backwards, so that the, the properties are at least minimally preserved, so that when CPC funding is available, that $5 million price tag is not now $7 million or $10 million, or the building is lost and we can't reuse it anymore. So if, if I could just ask that we keep up with maintenance and get ready for CPA funding in the future, that would be best for, for a lot of those properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. You know, I just found something out. We've been doing Zoom meetings for a year, and I just found out, I just figured out you changed the layouts. And now all of a sudden, instead of looking at six people, I'm looking at 48 or 49. This is great. Hi, everyone. Robert Buxbaum, who's been around as long as I have, has his hand raised, and has done so much good work for the city. Robert?
Yeah, hi. Thanks. I, I just have a short thing to add, which is, one of the things, as a member of CPA, I'm also on the Conservation Commission, and we have had very few projects of open space. I think Camp Paradise is basically the only one. And, and so I think it's fantastic that folks from Green Belt and trustees are here. And maybe there's a way we could get that more on the forefront, because it is something, as Mr. Ailes pointed out, it looks like the Open Space Reserve was the largest of any of the reserves, just because we haven't had an opportunity to spend in that regard. So I'm looking forward to figuring out ways in which we can ramp up our, our ability to fund open space projects, which often are very big budget items. So they, like Camp Paradise, may need to be bounded. And they often come up out of cycle, and I think as Mr. Watzu pointed out, that they, they, you know, sometimes you have to add very quickly. But I'm just looking forward to that discussion and hoping to, that we can ramp up our open space protection for CPA funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buxbaum. Always good to see you. Anybody else from the Community Preservation Committee? You can either type your name in the, in the chat or raise your hand, because I figured that one out, too. All right. Ms. Richter, thank you. Anything else to add before we move on to our next committee?
No, thank you all very much.
No, thank you. Great stuff. Much appreciated. Let's move on to the Beverly Affordable Housing Trust. And we're lucky to have our Planning Director Darlene Winters, that chair. Ms. Wynn?
Hello. Thank you. I don't, just being kind of involved in the planning of this meeting, I don't, I'm, I'm more here to listen as well. But I do want to give the opportunity for some of our members to provide any comments. We have both Richard Dinkin and Sue Gabriel, as well as the mayor and Bryant, other staff members on the board. So if anybody would like to speak, I see Sue.
I see Sue Gabriel. Ms. Gabriel?
Well, I think this is a great meeting. Thank you for all being here. And I look at this list, and truthfully, as a citizen of the, the community, everything looks really important. So I don't envy you, your jobs, when you're trying to figure out funding. But I just do want to say, so far, the Affordable Housing Trust has not needed to come to the CPA for funding. But I do want to just remind this group that the projects that have been funded through the affordable housing, they're just so very important to this community. And I'm thrilled that we have the opportunity to invest in these kinds of affordable housing projects. And I just hope that we can continue to do so. And if we do have a need to come into the CPA, that, you know, you realize that if somebody can't live here, they actually can't then be able to get into open spaces or appreciate historic buildings. So it's pretty critical, the work that the Affordable Housing Trust is doing. So thanks for letting me say my piece.
Of course. Thank you, Sue. Bryant Ailes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to just take a quick opportunity to talk about bonding, because the topic has come up a couple times already in some comments. One, one piece I did want to clarify, we have, as noted, bonded once through the CPC. And the way that works, I'm sure many of you are aware, that once the body and the city commit to a borrowing through the CPC, that funding cannot be removed from, from basically the Act. You cannot, the voters cannot choose to remove the surcharge if the body is obligated to pay debt service for, say, 30 years. After 30 years, it can. But it must, once the commitment is made, that revenue source needs to remain in place. So I did want to mention that, because I didn't want anyone to think that if you did commit to a borrowing, that there was a risk that the funding source would go away. It wouldn't, it wouldn't work that way. You are obligating the taxpayers to continue with the surcharge, but the funding source can't go away. The second point of clarification I did want to make is, the, the Camp Paradise purchase, when we looked at what was borrowed, which is $450,000, what was decided was that we would take out a 10-year note for that $450,000 in principal. And the way bond offers work is, there are coupon rates, which are basically the quoted interest rates that will be paid back over time. But what banks do is they offer premiums upfront. They look, they're almost like rebates that they pay to hold the city's debt and receive those coupons, coupon rates later as income. And so when we look to evaluate the true cost of borrowing, we've, we look at it on a net interest cost. So you may have, in the case of Camp Paradise, you may have a 3% coupon rate for years one through three. But it doesn't cost 3% to borrow that money. You need to net it against the upfront payment that you receive from the banks when they purchase those, those bonds. And so when you look at the coupon, the net interest rate of the Camp Paradise purchase, it is actually only a 1.8% interest rate that we're paying on that borrow. And it's over 10 years. So yes, cumulatively, it does add up. It's about a net cost to the, the fund of about $70,000 over the 10-year term. So I did want to make that clarification. And then lastly, I did want to just note for everyone, many of you are probably aware, because you all may own your own homes or, or have financing agreements that you're involved with, but we are at a point in time where there are record rates right now. And the city just went to market recently on 30-year borrowings and received a net interest rate of under 2% for 30 years. So, you know, I know it's expensive, and you don't like to obligate money or, or cash flow for a long period of time necessarily, but cash has never been cheaper to front-load right now. We do benefit from taxes on status, and there's buying power with that. So I do, you know, want us, to encourage us all to seriously consider that as a means to maybe begin to tackle some of these larger projects. We're not going to have a better time to do it than right now. So those are just my two cents around that. But I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss it further if you would like.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ailes at this time? And I'm sure that if you come up with a question later, that you may have not been ready to ask. Mr. Ailes will accept your phone call or an email. Gregory Sharp has a question and would like to speak. Mr. Sharp?
Yeah. Hi. Hi. Thank you, Mr. Ailes. This, this is very helpful. Is the state obligated to continue matching funding under these circumstances? And I would also like to say that if you could provide a report for their respective committees on this, it would be quite useful. Thank you.
Well, as for the state's obligation, you know, I'm really not an expert on how that gets obligated each year. I believe it is part of the, the state budget, and it's derived from the surcharge that happens at the Registry of Deeds for real estate transactions. So to the extent the revenue's there and the legislature apportions it to the CPC, then those funds will get distributed through the local services division as they do now. And as for a report, I'm happy to get you, you know, whatever you think might be helpful for your committee. I can, I can be reached, you know, online, my, my telephone number, my email's there. If you wouldn't mind, just, you know, let me know specifically what you might be looking for. We can get you what you need.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Always thank you, Mr. Ailes. All right. Anybody else from the Beverly Affordable Housing Trust?
Okay. I don't see anyone. Thank you.
I know. I'm waiting for Richard to say something. Are you good tonight? All right. Let's move on to the Beverly Golf and Tennis Commission. Mr. Loud, are you still with us?
I'm still with you.
All right. You are up.
Okay. Well, first off, I didn't realize when I got invited to this meeting that I was going to have a, going to have to give a report on where we are with things. But I can say, in reference to the CPC, we have had several projects through the CPC over the last 10 years, regarding mostly in the clubhouse. But...
Mr. Loud froze up. You'll sign on and sign off if you can.
Or he can turn his video off.
Yeah.
Look at the...
There he is. Yeah, you just checked out for about maybe a whole minute. So we're going to start again. Go ahead.
That was the best part.
Yeah, that's why I want you to repeat it.
Okay. We have, we have several projects, we have had several projects in, in the past 10 years, mostly for the clubhouse. Currently, we have one project working that is for $400,000 and from CPC, and $100,000 from the Golf and Tennis Commission, for a total of 500 for this project at this time. Both the project manager, and that was to hire a project manager and an architect firm, and they are now presently working to develop a master plan for the clubhouse by creating a project scope, do specifications, drawings, and renderings. These will be used to go to the next phase of the project, which would be to do construction. Presently, the building formerly actually known as, for those who may not know, the United Shoe Machinery Corporation Athletic Club, it was built in 1911, so it's 110 years old. And then it made, it was made into a golf club in 1914. The architects that currently work can retrieve the history of the building, its configuration and changes to assess current conditions in order to develop the concept for, for designing the specification documents to move forward into the construction phase to preserve the external and internal features of the, of this historic building. Initial estimate for the project was about $5 million, and that was like three years ago. I'm sure that the overall has gone up since then, but just due to the cost. We had delays in starting the project, of course, due to the pandemic, but it's now back on track and moving forward. An updated project cost for the construction phases projected for September, October, after the architect and the project manager finish, finish putting together their design project. And it, it'll depend on Mr., the guidance from Mr. Ailes to go forward once we get those numbers. I, I know there was a few of our commission members on board tonight. And if any has a, has a question or wants to say anything, please raise your hand and Paul will let you in.
Anybody from the Golf and Tennis Commission to add to what Mr. Loud presented? All right. Thank you, Mr. Loud.
Thank you.
Always good to see you, especially this time of year, because it's baseball season.
There you go. Football's over.
Let's move on to the Historic District Commission. Now, Mr. William Finch, longtime chair. Mr. William Finch, longtime chair. Has left the meeting.
Mr. Finch may be having some technical difficulties. I would note that Susie Lamont, Historic Commission's Vice Chair, is here.
Susie?
Apologize for calling on you in this impromptu manner.
That's okay.
No, we appreciate that, Emily.
Good to be par for the course. So Historic Preservation Concerns, I think we, Denise's summary is pretty much accurate. Wendy's comments about some of the missing projects, like what's happening in the clerk's office and a plan for those documents is important to get on the list as well, but I think two things I would, points I would want to make are, number one, that affordable housing projects and preservation projects can go together. And if we can make any of these work in both fashions, similar to what the Briscoe Project is, to be thinking about that, how to merge the two. Geez, and if we can throw an open space, that's awesome as well. And the other, other, other thing I was going to say is about our inventory work and our National Register nominations, that part of the importance of getting those maybe done a little bit ahead of some of the big, big projects is that if we can get those recognized and listed by the Register, the National Register, then that enables us to leverage more funding opportunities to pay for the big-ticket projects. So that, that's sort of a teeing off to enable the next steps to go on some of the bigger, the buildings, some of the bigger buildings, just sort of elevating that level of importance of nominations and inventories. Wendy or Caroline, do you have any?
I know Wendy wanted to say something.
She's always worth listening to.
Sorry, it's Wendy. Susie did a great job. I think the inventory and National Register work is, is a critical planning piece to, to lead up to some of those projects. And I think the, the work of the commission is, is also to help start to recognize some of the unrecognized properties that are out there. You know, we have some, some mid-century modern resources out there. There may be more landscape-type resources. So Emily Hutchings has provided great support to the commission and I, I think she's a very reliable source for some of that, that planning work to, to queue up some of the future projects, so thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl.
This is Caroline Mason. May I say something, Mr. President?
Of course, Caroline Mason. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I want to really underscore the importance of, of work with National Registration for, register for some of our properties and also extending our business district. We have a, we have very little protection in the city for many of our treasures, including the, the Hale, you know, the Hale Farm and all of that. So we have a lot of work to do and one of our recommendations by Historic Plan was to make sure that we become a local historic district. So we're, we're far behind in where we need to be to really protect our resources. So any work that we can do in the way of recognizing and, you know, looking at these properties carefully, I think is really important, absolutely important. Thank you.
Ms. Mason, and I know Bill Finch is back on the telephone. Mr. Finch? I know he's there. Bill, your committee's doing a wonderful job on your behalf. I hear some heavy breathing, that's it. Bill, try to get, hang up and come back into the meeting? And then we'll get you again. Okay, is that everybody on the Historic District Commission, other than Mr. Finch? And we can come back if we get a clear connection on that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was just saying yes, Mr. President.
Oh, Emily, and Emily does a great job getting your commission, your commission's information before the City Council. Does a wonderful job, as does the whole planning department. Let's move on to Open Space and Recreation Commission, and I know David Alden St. Pierre is here if he wants to say a few words. I know he's at work.
I am, yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. You know, as Robert Bouchbaum had mentioned, you know, a lot of us would love to see some more open space projects. And, you know, many of them are big-ticket items, which I think has been sort of one of the reasons not a lot have gone through yet. But I know 27X is mentioned on that paperwork, but there's 27A on there as well, and 716 Cabbage Street's always an, an issue. So there's lots of things out there that we would love to see happen to try to preserve some open space and increase some more usage opportunities for our citizens. So I don't really have much else to say right now, other than we still keep our, our eye on some of those properties and projects. I don't know if anyone else from our committee has anything else to mention.
Wayne Miller?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wonder, and not for the first time, what we can do systemically to be able to move with alacrity when opportunities arise, like when we're in a position of right of first refusal, for instance, how can we be ready to strike quickly when the iron is hot on these projects?
I'm gonna go to the finance guy, Mr. Ailes. Can you, you wanna take that one?
Well, I, it, it's a tough one because it's, it's not like this revenue source is significant enough to begin to have reserves in place to be able to, to pounce when the opportunity arises. I mean, I think the committee has done a very good job maintaining the open space reserve balance. You know, there's almost a quarter million, three quarters of a million dollars available there in that reserve alone. And certainly that could provide some flexibility. A lot of times, these properties, when I see them, they're the types of properties that, you know, have, have either been had, having tax issues or, you know, were unable to find the property owner. And so they're already kind of highlighted through the planning department as, as properties we need to keep an eye on. We also can be exploring opportunities around some grants that we might be able to leverage, as was the case with Camp Paradise. You know, it, it's a very good point. I think they're conversations we need to continue to keep in the forefront. And I don't think there's any, you know, one-size-fits-all, Mr. Miller, that, that we can say, you know, we'd be ready to, you know, take a swing at 716 Cabbage Street or something like that. But certainly, we can, we can try to piece together what's available here for resources, what's leveraged the city may have in terms of its state partners and such. I don't know if someone from the planning department may want to add a little something because I know Emily's heavily involved in some of this stuff and Darlene.
Let's go to Mayor Cahill. All right, I think that he wants to help out on this one. Mayor Cahill?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I think to Mr. Miller's question, you know, if, if there's an opportunity that demands quick action, you know, this, this goes to that conversation about, is there an appropriate role for bonding? And how should the CPC and the City Council, if so, manage that? Right? Because if, if something came up mid-year and it required a, the type of a purchase price that, you know, necessitated bonding, and the CPC determined that that was worth taking on, it would be, you know, what, what is your current capacity? Right now, you're servicing debt on one bond issuance. Certainly, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to do a bunch of them and load up and not have flexibility, but is there a comfort level with a certain percentage of the overall annual revenue stream that you might, you know, if you're looking at holding in reserve in anticipation of potential for a land acquisition opportunity, you just don't know when it's coming, or, you know, at present, we know there, there, there's at least one, if not a couple, potentially in the offing that may or may not come to pass. But, you know, that, that's one way of looking at it. Right now, there's flexibility within the annual fund to do that. There wouldn't be, that flexibility would be, you know, would go away if we were to have three or four bond issuances with a whole lot of debt service. So it, you know, I, I don't want to make anybody nervous. To date, there's been one approval of a bond issuance. It's been a modest bond issuance at that, but that would seem to be one way to accomplish something that would need to happen quickly.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Mr. Miller, are you good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Gregory Sharp would like to make another comment. Sir?
Yeah, thank you. Actually, Mayor Cahill mostly captured what I wanted to say. There is a, I mean, in order to capture open space and make it protected forever, we need to be flexible enough to bring a lot of money in a short time period. So as long as we have that capability, I feel good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Anybody else from the Open Space and Recreation Committee? Great questions and great comments. Two things before we move on. I would really love to see some movement on that 27X. I see Mr. Mann here, Charlie's been working on the parcel 27X for a long time. And I know it's just a small parcel, so that could be something that would make a difference. And two, I know the Open Space and Recreation Commission is really, was really involved on getting signage to Beverly's trails and woods, and they're amazing. And I can't tell you how many constituents make comments about how easy it is to find great places to take a hike here in the city of Beverly. So keep up the good work. Last, but certainly not least, we have our Parks and Recreation Commission. Is Mark Casey still with us?
Still here, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
What do you have to say, my friend?
You know, there's no secret how much help we do need with our parks and recreation. And between the tennis and basketball courts are really in some bad shape, ball fields, the lights at Cooney Field, you know, on and on and on, playgrounds need help. But, you know, we, we've been fortunate that, that the CPC has helped us in, in many ways. And also, we've been fortunate to have a lot of grants that have come our way to help us move some of these projects along. So with that said, I just wondered, see if any of my colleagues from the Parks and Recreation Commission have anything to say? We'll start with Nancy and go read on the line.
I know it'll be hard to believe, Mark, but I don't have anything to say. I think you, you pretty much summed it up with our needs, which, which right now, we're not even able to keep up with basic repair and maintenance of our basketball courts and our tennis courts. And again, you know, I want to publicly thank the CPC for their generosity over the years. So I guess I did have something to say, so thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Jan, anything? Can you just put?
Thank you, Mark. I just wanted to bring up the fact that parks and recreation here in Beverly is probably one of the places with all of our great parks, our beaches, our coastlines, that we touch more people in Beverly than I think any other of our commissions. We've got the kids all summer long, we've got the ball fields, we've got everything that the people of Beverly need and want for their recreation purposes. And for them to go there and see tennis courts, basketball courts that are deteriorating and falling apart, our playgrounds that if it wasn't for our Park of the Year every year that we go into and do it over, the help from those communities where these parks are, they would really be in rough shape. But even with doing that, a lot of our parks need help. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Bill, Low, do you have anything to add?
Well, I've been on, I've been on this commission for a while, and CPC has, has really come through a number of times to get fairly large projects up. But I know that the basketball and the tennis, because we do a survey every year of, you know, of the whole city of what's the needs, and those two particular ones usually come up. It's just, it's just amazing how tennis courts and basketball courts deteriorate so fast. Over at the Golf and Tennis, we have tennis courts, but they're all clay. They're all different. It's totally different than what's around. But I do see, I do see the use of them at the high school, at least there's tennis courts available at some, in some degree. But the basketball courts particularly, I mean, kids dribbling down the court and they hit a crack and away it goes. So they do need help on that. As far as baseball, as President Guancey noted earlier, it's baseball season now, so they're starting up to get everything rolling. And it's looking good. I know that the Public Works Group takes good care of the park at Harry Ball Field and the others, too. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bill. How about you, Henry, Pito? Anything you'd like to add?
All right, Mark.
Okay. How about Bruce, like, would you like to say anything, Bruce? Well, if you have a chance?
Sure. I'm, I'm reluctant to turn my camera on because I think you'd rather look at my daughter than me, but anyway, yeah, I just want to summarize what everybody was talking about. We obviously, well, have benefited from about 17 projects in 2015 with the CPC, and we're very grateful for that. We've been able to do a lot of work at a lot of parks. As I've talked about in some of the budget hearings over the years, it's still a huge need. We have about $500,000 to $1 billion worth of projects just along. There's three, two, there's three tennis courts, a couple basketball courts that need to be totally replaced. We put them out to bid a couple of years ago, but they came back at about $100,000. So that's just four or five out of the total number of 20 basketball courts and tennis courts. The others need repairs and things like that. The lights at Cooney Field, you know, it's near and dear to Council President's heart. Those are, I got a quote for $425,000 just for the equipment and $150,000 for the work. So that's just the lights at, at Cooney Field, the lights at Inniscenti Park are not far behind. But we spent $250,000 in 2018 out of the Enterprise Fund and our Park of the Year funds to fix, do repairs of a lot of the playgrounds in the city. And, you know, all of the playgrounds have been, we've done, were added since 1999, but we have 28 playgrounds in the city. And even if we do one a year or two a year, you know, by the time we complete the cycle, those playgrounds are now 25, 30 years old. So we're constantly repairing, replacing equipment as needed, which adds up. We do have the Park of the Year Fund, which we're grateful for, but, you know, some of these playgrounds are, are very large and require more than what we have in the Year Fund. The, somebody mentioned the bathhouse at Dane Street Beach. Did renovate the bathhouse at Dane Street Beach back a few years ago, and it was done using city money. We replaced all fixtures and stalls inside for the bathrooms, but we had a much larger plan that we were hoping to get some money for, but at the time, there was concerns about flooding and so forth, so we didn't push forward with the monies to redo the bathhouse. But that's something we're always willing to talk about, but again, it's not a small-ticket item. So, you know, we're, we're open to doing just about anything in the parks. Obviously, money is a big issue for us, but we're happy to work with neighborhood groups, corporations, whatever, to get donations. Though we didn't, I didn't even mention the carriage house at Lynch Park, it was mentioned before. It's a gorgeous building. We'd love to turn it into a community center that can be used by everybody effectively. And, but it's, it is a $5 million plus projects. We're hoping someday to be able to get down that road and make that happen. So I want to thank Council President and all of the commission members, committee members that are here for the great work you do, and we're very grateful for what our folks on the Park of Recreation Commission do. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Doyd. Always a wealth of information. So that's, we've heard from all of our city committees, why don't we reach out to some of our other?
I apologize for interrupting. Can I just ask Mr. Doyd to say one more thing? Because...
Because we met recently to look at the basketball courts and the tennis courts. And he's exploring whether, whether some combination of those is an appropriate park grant application to the state this year.
Sure. The, the basketball court, or the tennis courts at Cove Playground are definitely need to be replaced. The tennis court at Cahill Park in Centerville needs to be replaced completely. The basketball court at Holcroft needs to be, if not replaced, you know, major, major work. And the basketball court at Bartlett Gardens needs major, major work. So as I mentioned, those are five courts. My goal is to, or Mayor and I talked about getting a state grant, hopefully for $400,000. We'll apply towards some, if not all of those repairs, along with some CPC funding, hopefully, and some other opportunities. But we're hoping to start that process in June when the state grant application is due. And by next year, be able to do major work on some of these courts. So again, it's something that we desperately need to do, but we have to find the money. So hopefully, we'll get a state grant for that.
All good, Mayor Cahill? Thank you. Before we go to members of the City Council, I would like to recognize our outside stakeholders that have an interest in CPC funds in working with the city of Beverly. And we have Essex County Green Belt, the Trustees of the Reservation, Historic Beverly and Harbor Light Community Partners, and Chris LaPointe. You read my mind through Mayor Cahill. Why don't you speak on behalf of Essex County Green Belt? Mr. LaPointe?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you very much for including Green Belt in this meeting tonight. This is, this has really been great. Just to speak to a couple of points that frankly were made really, really well. I think from our standpoint, working on open space projects, working on conservation real estate requires flexibility. And it can, it can be, you know, long, long periods of seeming like nothing is happening, sort of punctuated by, you know, a rush and a bunch of chaos as we're, we're dealing with private landowners. We're dealing with the requirement that we have willing sellers. We're trying to match up price and value and timing on, on all of these projects. And that's a real challenge. So I hear the frustration that more open space projects haven't, haven't come forward. I think in terms of Green Belt, we would love to see more open space projects. We would love to work in partnership with the city. Certainly, many of the city's priorities are projects that we would love to work on. I think, I hope a lot of you know that we work with cities and towns across the county, particularly with CPA towns where we are able to try to work with landowners and structure projects and contracts that allow the time that we need to pull together state grants, private fundraising, city CPA funds, so that no one funding source has to shoulder all of the burden. So that's, that's just sort of quickly. The second thing I was really glad to hear about the, the interest in, and the questions about bonding. I think those are, those are really important questions. I think our experience is that many communities find that particularly with, with real estate projects where the timing is uncertain, the opportunity is sort of once in a lifetime and the borrowing rates are, are attractive still, that bonding can be a useful tool for some of these open space projects. And with that, I, I think I'll let others speak. But I just, again, thank you for the opportunity. I hope you, you see Green Belt as a potential partner and a resource for you as you go forward with your open space projects.
Thank you, Mr. LaPointe. David Sentimena from Essex County, no, for Trustees of the Reservation is here.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much, everyone, for the opportunity to be with you this evening. I would say that Chris largely stole my talking points just now. But I would, I would, I would echo him in saying that, you know, we are, you know, sort of in the position of constantly looking for projects and trying to cultivate and nurture them. But at the same time, our ability to, to make them happen when it would be convenient for a grant schedule or a funder or something is, is finite at best. We acknowledge that that is, that is a, a little bit of an Achilles heel for us. But I would just say that, you know, we, the trustees across the state have worked with any number of communities, CPA programs, I know on acquisitions work, but on stewardship work as well. And we would be, you know, interested in, in working with Beverly along either line. I guess it will come as neither a surprise nor a secret that the Moraine Farm property is one that's front and center for us at the moment. We have had some discussions with folks within the city around that. That's a situation to continue to monitor closely. I can't say a lot more than that at this juncture, but that is certainly something that's a high priority for the trustees right at the moment. And we will be continuing to stay in touch with that, with that situation. So I guess with that, I will again thank everyone for their, for their time and the opportunity to speak this evening. And turn it back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, David. We would love to have you up there on Moraine Farm. Okay, Kate Bowden, you don't want to say anything. That's fine. It's really confusing with all these people here, but it's really interesting. And I want to give everybody their time. I think Sue Gorganian from Historic Beverly is still here?
I am.
Great, Sue. Good to see you.
Nice to see everybody. I'd love to see you all in person someday soon. First of all, I want to say thank you because we have clearly benefited from Community Preservation Act funds. We've been able to do a number of different projects that have made an enormous difference for us. And as some of you know, last summer, the world discovered Cahill Farm and largely due to the concerts that the Cabot held there. And it was just, it was just wonderful. I want to support a couple of things that I heard previously. First of all, the need for the, in our National Registered District nominations to be done. That alone will not protect anything, but it will help us to identify what is in need of protection and in need of preservation. So that's really important. And the second thing is the cemeteries. They're a hugely important historic and geological resource. And there are some really critical issues that need to be taken care of. And so I would just encourage some attention to that because I think that we're going to lose a lot of the stones in some of the most historic spots of the Beverly Cemeteries. And thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Sue. And last, but certainly not least, let's go to Andrew DeFranza from Harbor Light Community Partners. Everybody say congratulations. He's a newlywed. He should be on his honeymoon, not sitting here with the 52 of us. But Mr. DeFranza, you know, you're, you're, you're always welcome at the table, anything here in Beverly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It's nice to be with 52 of my closest friends. Nice to see you all. And we're, we're, of course, delighted and huge fans of CPA, using it around the, around the region and nowhere more so than, than in our home city of Beverly. It's a tremendous tool. One item that I would like to highlight that I believe my, my fellow Goth Hillers, Susie Lamont, mentioned earlier, is that whenever we have an opportunity to do more than one thing at a time, so did David and Chris's work and to some of the historic people, the more we can do more than one of these really important community goals at a time, I think the, that's, that's a really big win. So Briscoe, I think, is a, is a great example in terms of being historic and housing and open space preservation at one time. So the more, the more, both in Beverly and around the region, that we're able to, to integrate some of these important ethical community priorities, the better, the better that that is, the more, more value, I think, is the community we get out of those dollars. But in all cases, I would just celebrate and applaud and give our gratitude to the Community Preservation Committee and the residents of Beverly who fund it. And to our delegation at the State House who continues to advocate for the match. And there were some recent increases in the match in the last legislative session, which should benefit us here at home in Beverly. So thank you very much. And we'll look forward to Anchor Point Groundbreaking is coming on June 4th in the morning. Anybody who would like to pop over for that, that's, that'll be very exciting, Phase One. And we'll, we'll be coming around with Phase Two sometime, probably a couple of years from now. And with any luck, we'll hear some good news from the state about Briscoe if we're really fortunate. Later this year, Wayne Miller, my friend Wayne Miller is, is baiting me. So I would like to point out that I am wearing my 50th Anniversary Super Sub T-shirt. For anybody who is concerned, this was not a conspiracy. I did not do that intentionally. But I did wear it under a sweater for the balance of this day, Wayne. And I appreciate you paying attention to my fashion sense, Mr. Miller. I'm delighted by that. So make sure you stop in tomorrow and get a sandwich. I'll probably do the same. So thank you, everybody. And happy to take any housing questions if anybody has anything like that, Mr. President.
Hey, thank you, Andrew. And not to talk business, but that was 50th, that was March 2020. We're on, and now we have 51st Anniversary T-shirts because, you know, COVID spoils, among other, among a lot of other things, our 50th anniversary celebration.
Do I, do I trade this one in and get another one? Or I have to go get a, I gotta?
Absolutely. Thank you, everybody. And Wayne, thank you for the comedy. We need that. Sometimes I get a little stale. All right, now I'd love to hear from my colleagues on the City Council about what their thoughts about the CPC funding and the CPC committee and everything we've talked about tonight. And Council Rotundo is quick on the buzzer. He should join, he should sign up to play Jeopardy. Let's go Council Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I was practicing that. I am practicing for Jeopardy. Sorry for the, no video. Unfortunately, I'm having technical problems with that. But I do have a few questions. First, I do want to make a comment about the CPC. A few years ago, I was extremely involved with the process. Fortunately, being able to do the Livingstone Park project, and they were extremely helpful. Bruce Doig was phenomenal, the mayor was. So it's been a great project. It's really been a great community. To speak how much the CPC, as well as collaboration with the city departments to get the project going. So I just want to firstly give high accolades for that. A couple of the questions are guided towards Mr. Iles, and it's to do with bonding. I know you kind of explained it. I just want to clarify for someone of myself to make sure I'm understanding, is where Camp Paradise has been bonded? Let's say in a few years, if there was a voter repeal of the CPA, that cannot be done in effect. Is that correct where we have a bonding obligation? Or if it is possible, would that end up being the assumption of the tax? Would it become our liability to continue paying that bonding? So that's one question. And then the other question, which is similar to bonding, and it's to speak of the larger projects, we constantly hear about the Carriage House as well as the clubhouse for the, for the Beverly Golf and Tennis, which equals to be about $10 million. Would that be something where money is cheap right now to bond it over a certain amount of time where it would be, could it be something that would be collaborative between the city as well as CPC funding? So I guess it's kind of the one and the same, but different.
So maybe I'll start. I think the mayor may want to chime in on that latter question. But to your point about the borrowing, the way I understand it to work is that if we continue to have the annual obligation of about $50,000 a year in debt service, the voters cannot eliminate the surcharge completely. They need to leave in place at least enough to cover the bond obligation that's in place. So if, for example, your example, we went and borrowed for 30 years to do the Carriage House, well, that's a 30-year obligation. We will need to maintain that level of revenue coming through the CPA for the, for the next 30 years. Hopefully, that answers your first question. The, the second one, I do want to give you kind of a sense of, of what the, what the dollar cost is, right? So you'd be looking at around $65,000 a year in debt service at a declining, declining payment. In year one, it'd be about $65,000 per million on a 30-year note. So you can do the quick math, and if it's $5 million, then multiply that by five. It's, that's 350, 370,000, somewhere in that range. So it does add up quickly when you're talking these large principal values. I don't know. Mayor, did you want to add anything about the Counselor Rotundo's last part of the question there?
No, I thought I wanted to add something on this first part, but it's.
Okay.
But what, what did you just say? I'm sorry. I was ready to speak, and then you said your last bit, and my mind slipped.
The first part was about how much revenue source needs to remain in place if we've obligated?
Oh, right, right. You know, this is just one person's opinion. But I know when, when we came to the CPC several years ago and requested the bond authorization on Camp Paradise, there was a lot of concern raised about, you know, what if the voters decide to reverse the vote and eliminate the CPA? And at the time, we were in public here, two or three of the CPA. So I think there was, but that said, I would say that by today, it is such a well-understood and accepted part of, you know, of, of the, the average homeowner's annual bills to the city. And I think that this CPC and the council and collectively everybody who, you know, really has been a part of this venture and this, this journey has brought quality projects forward, has had those projects, you know, vetted and improved upon and funded. And I do believe that the community overwhelmingly sees the value in what the CPC, what the CPA funds make possible. So I would like to believe that if we collectively keep managing our parts in this and keeping faith with the taxpayer, that this fund is likely to continue to be a part of, of what we all and our, you know, people coming along after us have available to the community to meet these needs going forward. I really don't, I'd like to think, I don't know how much you agree with this, but I'd like to think that if we keep managing our, our parts of this responsibly, that the support for the CPA in Beverly is going to continue to be strong for years and decades to come. That's probably what I wanted to share. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Counselor Rotundo, you're good?
I have just one other question, then I will be good, I promise. And it is still to do with this subject matter. Brian, if, is there, and I don't know actually if you have this answer, if the chairperson of the CPC would. Where the council and the city adopted a financial policy, so to speak, for our budgets and debt loads and everything, does CPC have a similar type of policy in place? Or has it ever been talked about? For something of this matter is, how much do we want to set aside for reserves? How much do we want to set aside for bonding purposes, whatever the case may be? I know that there's four categories, and we do allocate the money accordingly. I know there's a reserve, as you speak to, an unforeseen reserve fund. But do we have any really sort of financial policy? Or is that just something that really isn't worth having in on a CPC fund?
Well, I think there's always value in having policies, right? Because it, it helps kind of direct the direction of what it is you hope to accomplish. You know, you, you know as well as anyone that, that a lot of people on this call were instrumental in getting a lot of the city's financial policies in place, stabilization, debt load policies. And they've served the city well. And so my two senses, yeah, there's some benefit in that. As long as it's thoughtfully done, it can be a tool to help support a longer-range vision for the, for the resources.
Thank you. And now I am finished. Thank you, Mr. President.
You got it. Counselor Rotundo. Counsel Flaherty, please.
Mr. President. I'm sorry. I thought I saw Chairwoman Richter on mute. I think she might have wanted to.
Unmute, okay. My chat is getting really confusing. That's why I'm, I know the council. Ms. Richter, do you want to say something before I go to Counsel Flaherty?
Very briefly, I would say that our policy financially is to leave ourselves as flexible as possible by leaving as much money available in the general reserve as we, we don't have to allocate to the other funds. That's been our goal because of out-of-cycle and, you know, being able to move monies more easily. know, being able to move monies more easily between categories. Have we had a conversation about a specific amount or percentage for a bond commitment? No, we have not. But we really haven't had that magnitude of projects before us, to be honest.
Thank you, Ms. Richter. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mayor. I do agree with the mayor. I do believe we collectively, as a group here, have been good stewards of this money. I too, people do appreciate where we spend this money. I know when this came out several years ago, people were concerned it was another tax. But as you all can see, there's a lot of money that is tied up here that cannot go with the tax base on a, on an ongoing basis. It would be nice with the interest rates being low, if collectively we can come together. I think there's a lot of competing interests. I think the idea of open space is a good one, the idea of the Carriage House, and also the mention, what Susan talked about, is the cemeteries is an important thing that we can't overlook, because once that history is gone, it's gone, it's gone for, it's gone forever. So I think the idea, and also the fails and the courts, things that we cannot operate fully. And I think the idea of using CPC funds, bonding, grant possibilities, and one thing we, sometimes it's not always the easiest thing to do. We always don't do a great job with it collectively, but is fundraising, like private groups do. We can do that. If we put all those groups together, fundraising aspects, we can do the, you know, the open space and all the other programs I just mentioned here. I think we could, I think we can do it, because again, we're not going to, it's not going to happen overnight, but I think we should take advantage of those opportunities. Thank you, President, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Rand?
Thank you. Thank you for putting this collective meeting together with these amazing board members and volunteers and staff and department heads in the city. I think it is pretty impressive to look down the list of people and think about what this group of 50 some odd people has actually accomplished. Pretty exciting. And also to think about what we would still like to accomplish. So I guess I have like three comments slash questions, that maybe one for the CPC group, and a couple just kind of questions for different city departments, and of course, the mayor. So I'm curious, first, I'll, I'll echo Ms. Pearl's suggestion and sentiment that recreation projects, I think we could probably, and especially after hearing Mr. Doye's comments and hearing a list of all the different courts that need doing, I really do want to support Ms. Pearl's comment that kind of a, just more of an attack plan on grouping those projects together. So hearing what, what fundraised happened to corporate funds and CPC and Park of the Year funds, and do all of the tennis courts in one year. And maybe that's a bonding project, too. I think, you know, anytime we can reduce that overwhelming feeling that it's going to take the next 50 years to complete all this tennis court, I think that's a good thing for all of us, and including the community. So I just want to support that sentiment of sort of larger planned recreation projects. Along the same lines, first, a little shout out to the War II Civic Association, because that group is, you know, continues to put forward really good CPC, CPA proposals and works really well with the city, especially Suzie Lamont. She just is really committed to those projects and has helped that group get a lot of funding and things done. And if you want to check out her work, go look at the G A R Hall facade. It's beautiful. And that's not a solo project. There are lots of people here and department heads who've helped, too. But I'm curious to know, I'm increasingly getting kind of requests for almost like a, a park redesign of some really interesting places in War II, like Independence Park and Pleasant View Beach and the Park, Gillis Park up here in Goat Hill. I'm curious if the city, if mayor or planning department, Ms. Wen, if you've considered kind of, and I guess this involves engineering and recreation, if you've considered more of a redesign of the whole park. So the Civic Association just kind of, just won a grant with the city to redo the stairs at Gillis Park. But there's a lot of interest in a overhaul. So that's one question for the city. And then my last question, maybe for the CPC, is I'm curious to know if you have seen really innovative uses of CPC funding recently across the state? What, what are you seeing out there that maybe could spark our inspiration? Thanks.
Ms. Richter, do you want to take that question from Counselor Rand?
One of the things I think that we hoped for when, when we started this journey was that we would see some very heroic projects for the city. And we've seen them somewhat in other cities. I mean, obviously CPC doesn't fund the whole project, but, you know, we, we would like to see the development of the waterfront for the whole city with, with an overall plan, with a, you know, a grandiose plan, if you like. Those things really haven't come before us yet, which is really too bad.
I think I wanted to speak, too.
Yeah, Counselor Guanci, I was just going to touch on.
Okay, I sat here, I'm sorry.
Um, I mean, I guess, Ms. Richter, I'm curious to speak with you further about that. I mean, do we have some plan, we have done some planning around the waterfront. And so looking to advance that, I think is a goal shared by everybody. And I wanted to mention, too, earlier, you know, one of the other priorities has been kind of getting access to the waterfront and wait, and we found some legal hurdles to that in terms of, you know, public access and, and the way that the CPC money can be granted in regards to, I don't want to get into that, but paper streets versus ownership, and it's complicated. And, and sorry, Wendy, I skipped you. I know you raised your hand first, but I wanted to just comment on that. And I just, you know, I think, I think we all share that goal of getting better access to the waterfront and trying to figure out that, solve that problem as well. And we hope that we're making kind of slow progress to there. Maybe it's not, you know, heroic grant projects, but we're hoping to get there. I don't know if Wendy wants to go before I jump to Counselor Rand's other question about Independence Park, or should I just wrap, answer that one? I'll just go. It's a quick one. I haven't been involved. I think there's been some talk about plans for kind of re, redoing some of the parks. I know there might be some things in our files, or there've been some discussions about various parks over the past few years. I did want to point out that, you know, the city of Beverly has, has an open space and recreation plan that we're required to update every five years. And Chelsea and the open, Chelsea and my office and the Open Space and Rec Committee are just getting underway on restarting that. It will be started this year for some, for some public process, and then approved ideally next year or finalized next year. So that is maybe another opportunity to think, think about some of these projects and how we want to frame them and what, what we might like to see. It's usually, you know, we update the plan every five years, but that doesn't mean that we can't kind of change the way we look at it.
Good. Wendy, did you want to follow up? Ms. Pearl? Your hand is up. Unmute. There you go.
It took many clicks to unmute. I apologize.
That's okay.
When Counselor Rand asked about inspirational project, when Counselor Rand asked about inspirational projects, immediately I thought of Somerville. I went to Somerville, and there was a, like a training hosted in one of the schools that was being redone. They had a lot of capital investment in their school buildings. And in the courtyard of the school, which was a rehab of an old building, they created a community garden using CPA funds. And I think it was the thinking of, you know, capital investment and projects in the city overlaid with some of the goals of community preservation and bringing in an element of CPA to all of the projects that they do. So I think the need for community gardens is pretty high. I've seen some kind of chats and posts about where can I get a plot and where can I garden? And apparently, the Beverly Community Gardens plots are all reserved. There are none available. So there's a real need there. And there's also very expansive use of the open space category, where if we wanted to do a habitat project or something other than kind of a recreational open space project, there are opportunities for those. So I think there's, there's a way to kind of grow the program in a lot of ways. But Somerville is very innovative in the way they think about CPA and kind of fitting it into the small spaces of the projects that they're doing. Thank you.
Well said. Counselor Rand?
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Copeland?
Yes, thank you, Council President. And Counselor Rand, I didn't know we were shouting out our ward, so, you know, Ward Six in the house, just for everybody. I had a couple of things here. There's a lot to unpack in this meeting. And as the, the mayor said, that it's going to be an ongoing conversation, because there's a lot to talk about here and a lot of things that I know we all support and want to see happen. So I just talk about a couple of things quickly. One, as far as the, the parks within the city. To me, there's very few city parks that we have. I think we have a lot of community parks, meaning parks that are situated right within communities and right on top of houses and so forth. When I look at McPherson, to me, McPherson is more of a community park. You have, you know, the skating ramps, you have basketball, you have baseball, you have a lot of different things there, and it's not located within, within, you know, people's housing, you know, doesn't abut other people's housing. So you can actually go there, you can play, you can have fun. And we don't have too many of those in the city. And I think as we grow and move forward, we're probably going to need to have at least one more of those or something of that, that, that stature within the city. All these other ones that are the, the little community parks, to me, it's hard to really go in there and do the things that you would need to do to play and have fun outside of just the immediate people within that area. So, and you run into a lot of issues that we've been dealing with just in that situation. So that, I think the more that we can at least have another actual city park. So as we think about these plans, that might be something that we want to put into effect as well. Then from what the mayor was saying, you know, managing the CP, CPC funds responsibly, as I was looking through all of this, I was thinking, you know, just from a business perspective, where we have Lynch Park, the Carriage House, we have the Clubhouse, we have, you know, Parks and Recreation. Some of these things are private uses as far as the, the Clubhouse and so forth. So I think strategically, in conjunction with or before we look at bonding, we should be looking into how we can increase revenues in those categories. Because I know with some of them, they're, they're doing, you know, weddings and something else. If it's not open to the whole community, I love the idea of having a community center at Lynch Park. So if we're doing something like that, it's a little bit different. But if it's going to be more towards private functions, then I think just like any business, year over year, you look at how you can maximize or how you can at least increase the revenues that you're bringing in, which can help to at least fray some of the cost that we have to put into these. Or at least we can put that towards other funds. So I really like us to start, and I talked with Bruce Doye about this before, even with the, the different fields that we have, how can we start to maximize or at least grow the money that we're bringing in for the usage of those? And that way, we help to fray some of those costs, or at least have them pay a little bit into the cost of maintenance as we go forward. So, I mean, those are my, my biggest things. But I think if we're moving towards bonding, especially, there's a couple of things we have to consider. You know, to me, first, we have to look at maximizing the revenues, or at least increasing the revenues that some of these, you know, historical structures are going to bring in and how we can go about that, even from the grants, state and federal grants for the historic designations, looking into doing something like that, that can help to bring in more money. You know, we need to maximize those things in conjunction with or before we look into bonding. And then also bonding, when we're looking at these historical figure, structures, we also have to think about bonding that we need going forward in the future to help our community grow. So we have to balance those two as we move forward, just in my opinion or my thoughts. So we can't put too much into the preservation aspect, you know, outside of bringing in different sources of revenue. But if it's just bonding itself, then we also have to have an eye towards, you know, building towards the future, to use some of that bonding to go towards as well. So we have to balance those two. And that was my, my main thoughts. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Counselor Hausmann?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'll, I'll, just a couple of things. One is following up about the bonding discussion. I, I think Counselor Copeland raises an interesting point about, about balancing how, how we use that. The one thing I would say is, we have a historic opportunity to take advantage of, of historically low interest rates. And trying to maximize the opportunities that that presents us, I think, is, is, is a challenge for all of us, to try to prioritize the best way to use the interest rates that are out there now, to help us, at least on the subject of, you know, the, at hand, which is the Community Preservation Act interest areas of, of affordable housing, historic preservation and open space. One of the things really has caught my attention is the, in this evening's conversation, is making sure that we move as quickly as possible on getting the historic preservation designations in place, because that does help us leverage getting funding to apply to any one of these areas that relates to historic preservation. It's a way of, of jumpstarting, even if we don't have the funds right now, getting those prerequisites in place. Clearly seems to be a, a way of sort of leveraging the opportunities at hand. And then, third, I, I was kind of astounded, astounded when I heard Bruce Doye talk about the, the condition and the, the number of our parks. And as he said, you know, even if we do two or three a year, by the time you cycle through the whole series, you get back to the beginning of the, of the, of the parks, you're now 25, those parks are now 25 years older. So, so it's, it's, I think it presents a real challenge for us to try to figure out strategically a better way to address, whether it's Counselor Copeland's approach or others, or, you know, both, ways in which we can manage the, the maintenance and repair of those, just like we have committed as a city to ongoing maintenance of our, of our streets and sidewalks and our, and our schools. It seems clear that, that maybe we're, we're not quite up to snuff on the parks, a part of our, of our infrastructure. And then the last thing I have to say is, I just want to recognize and thank, we have, according to my screen, 52 people here, of extraordinary volunteers. It is what makes Beverly, in my mind, in my experience, so incredibly special, that we have so many people, so dedicated, so willing to devote their time and energies and their creativity to, to helping, to helping others and helping make this city a better place to, to live. So I would just say, thank you. I'm very grateful to, to, to everyone. I mean, we, just, just think about all the work that's gone into what we've accomplished. And that only happened because we have so many volunteers who are willing to give of themselves. So I just want to, that, that note of gratitude and, and thanks for everything that all of you who are here collectively tonight are doing and have done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Coach Wallace. Well said. Counselor Ames?
Hey, good evening. And I have to support everything that Counselor Hausmann and so many people have said tonight. But true, we are a strong community. And I, I also, so I, representing Ward Three, I represent, obviously, some of the most economically challenged, some of the most culturally diverse neighborhoods in the city. And I have been challenged, some of the most culturally diverse neighborhoods in the city. And I have been, um, on a path to try to re, reinvigorate, um, bring new life to Wholecroft Park, the Gage Street Playground in, uh, the middle of Gloucester Crossing. It's a beautiful historical park. And, um, I already see multi-generational use. Um, and it's, so I've been going through this process, mostly trying to bring, um, stakeholders to the table and to get locals invigorated and for them to see a vision where they can make the park their own, a place to gather and, um, be in community together. And this is a neighborhood often with, um, families and individuals who don't have open space, who don't have backyards. And, um, in the past year, we have endeavored to say that race, um, is a health crisis. And I think that when we look at pockets of the city where we can make significant impacts, uh, for people's physical and emotional health, especially coming out of this pandemic, um, I, I know that all of us here feel that this is really important. So, I just, I commend everyone. Um, there's only so many funds for all of this. Um, and, you know, all, all boats rise with the tide. So, I, I, as we move forward, I think this will be a great first conversation. And, um, I think that for all of us even moving forward, the concepts of maintenance for all these, um, all, all of these areas and buildings and these parks is, is critical to make sure that when we, when we bring new life to, um, a neighborhood or to a park or a space, that we're able to, to maintain that. Because, um, we certainly over time want to get the best bang for our buck. And I think that, I hope that we also as a community, as we look at the significant millions of dollars that are going to come in from the feds this year, thankfully, and, um, that we can take a look at it from the city side, you know, um, how maybe we can work together to try to, um, bring more funds to the table to restore so many of these properties and parks together. So, because I think, you know, it's all connected, we're all connected, it's all tied together. And I, I am grateful to be here tonight with all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ames. Um, if nobody else from the City Council has anything else to say, I would, uh, ask Mayor Cahill if you'd like to say a few things to wrap it up.
Sure. I, I, I really appreciate this conversation. Uh, a few people have said it. Counselor Hausman said it most recently. Thank you so much to all of our volunteers to do such amazing things in our community. Um, and then let's take it another step. Thank you to, to our great city staff at all levels. Um, lot of wonderful things going on. And, um, oh, and also, I do want to say, Wendy Pearl, thank you so much for your comments. I took more notes when you were speaking than any other time tonight. That's no knock on anyone else. A lot, a lot of good thinking going on, uh, and we'll, we'll try to do some, some good follow-up. Um, so, yeah, no need to, to belabor it. This has been a great conversation. I'm grateful for it and, and let's keep on working together. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. So, what we are going to do now is, we'll start from the bottom up on my list. I need each board or commission to, um, roll call out of their meeting. So, let's start with, uh, the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Mr. Mark Casey. Mark, did you go to bed? I know Mark was on the phone. Um, all right. Let's, how about, let's go to the Open Space and Recreation Commission.
Is David still here?
Yep, I am.
Okay, you're still here.
No, I am. So, I'm just going through everyone's name who was, was on the call. Is that correct?
Take a motion and second to adjourn and then go through a call, right?
Yes, thank you.
Motion second and then, yeah.
So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Seconded, Miller.
All right. And so, Liz Dunn?
Okay.
Liz Dunn, yes?
Yes.
Charlie Man?
Yes, let's adjourn.
Wayne Miller?
Yes, thanks all.
Merrill McCrory?
Yes.
And Greg Sharp?
Yes, agreed.
Thank you. The Open Space and Recreation Commission is adjourned. Thank you all for being here. Let's move on to the Historic District Commission.
Um, hopefully, are you able to hear me?
Bill Finch, we can hear you. Sorry, we couldn't hear you earlier.
Yeah, the whole thing. I will entertain a, Historic District Commission meeting, um, from one of the members.
Motion.
Wendy?
This roll call? Oh, second?
No, I need a motion to adjourn.
I thought Suzie just did.
And a second.
Bill, Suzie, motion to adjourn.
Suzie, a second of the motion to adjourn. Are you here?
Yeah, sure.
Our Caroline?
Miss Lamont seconded, Miss Pearl, no, Miss Lamont made the motion, Miss Pearl seconded. Now go.
I will now call the roll. Um, Carol, let's see, Suzie Lamont?
Yes.
Wendy Pearl?
Yes.
Caroline Mason?
Yes.
Okay, Bill Finch, yes.
Great job. Let's go on to Mr. Bill Loud and the Beverly Golf and, uh, Tennis Commission. Mr. Loud, please adjourn.
I need a motion from, uh, one of my colleagues to, uh, adjourn the meeting.
Escalillo, motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Second. But I'll call a roll. Uh, Arthur Thanos, I think he left. Kevin Escalillo?
Yes.
Bill Loud, yes.
Golf and Tennis is adjourned. Uh, Ms. Nguyen, would you, you're good. Ms. Nguyen, would you, um, close out the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yeah, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the Beverly Affordable Housing Trust.
So, moved.
Second.
All right, uh, roll call, Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Sue Gabriel?
Yes.
Richard Dinkin?
Hi.
Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
And Darlene Nguyen, yes.
Great. Uh, now the Community Preservation Committee, Ms. Richter?
Uh, Community Preservation Committee, motion to adjourn, please.
This is Derek, I move adjourn.
This is John, I'll second it.
Okay, roll call. Uh, Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Robert Buxbaum?
Yes.
Thomas Pisson?
Yes.
Christie Edwards?
Yes.
John Hall?
Yes.
Nancy Marino?
Yes.
Marilyn McCrory?
Yes.
Wendy Pearl?
Yes.
And Heather Richter, yes.
Great job. Thank you. Hey, Tom Passoni, good to see you. Nancy Marino, you're on every committee. It seems like you're on every committee.
I am, Paul, and I'd like to thank you very much for making sure I'm appointed to every committee in the city.
That means you get multiple checks every month, right, from the city?
I do, I do.
Well, let's try Mark Casey again with, uh, the Rec Depart, I mean, Parks and Rec. Mr. Casey, definitely nodded off.
Yeah.
If he's not, I can, I can read the roll if you want, or-
Would you please, thank you.
Uh, do we have any other members of the Parks and Rec Commission ready to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn, because I'm also on that, um, committee, darling.
All right, and is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, so, Mark Casey, already gone, I think. All right, Dorothy Bolus? I don't, I don't remember who was here. And I might have the wrong list, but, uh, Dan, do I have the wrong list? I'm trying to think. Uh, Jan Jaffgood?
Yes.
Bill Loud? Nancy Marino?
Yes.
And anybody else that I missed? Because I know the last two were not at the meeting.
Looks good.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Uh, so that's everybody. Hey, great job. Appreciate everybody's time and efforts and comments and questions. Um, really a great information sharing meeting. Hats off to the administration and, uh, Mayor Cahill and all of his department heads for being here and doing the work that they're doing on a day in and day out basis. Um, hey, the City Council, we have to adjourn. Our next City Council meeting will be Monday, May 3rd. Uh, I don't know if it'll be as exciting as this one, or there'll be that many people on my screen, but this really has been wonderful. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our City Council meeting.
So, moved.
Second.
Ms. Kent, are you still with us?
I am.
I would love a roll call, please.
James?
Yes.
Yes.
Dublin?
Yes.
Larity?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Pendo?
Yes.
Anne Guonce?
Before I say yes, Ms. Kent, did I forget anything?
I think you did good.
Okay. Um, I will say yes. Thanks again, everybody. We'll see you next Monday night. Don't forget, if you want to watch something on BevCam or we have Charter Review coming up on Wednesday night at 7:00. If not, we'll see you next Monday, 7:00 P.M.
Thank you, everyone.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Great job.
This feels like signing off on the Waltons. Night, Jim Bob. Night, Grandpa.